So, welcome to our first Zoom meeting for the planning board and apologize if I screw up. This is the first time I've done something like this. I also have to let everyone know that my internet does occasionally go out. So if I vanish, it's possible that means the meeting will vanish too. But if the fact that maybe the co-host can keep running things, that would be great. Tim, let me unmute you. Sorry, that didn't happen before. Actually, Catherine, can you unmute Tim? If you find him in your...
Got him.
All right.
You're out of it.
You don't want to anyway.
Yeah, maybe not. Okay. So yeah, I'm hoping that if my internet goes out for like a few seconds, that that won't destroy the meeting. But if it does, we'll have to figure out a way to reconvene the meeting some other day. And I guess with this many people attending, I'm assuming that some of you are going to want to address the the planning board. To do that, near the bottom of your screen, there should be some icon that's the sign for raising your hand. And that would be the way to indicate that you want to speak at the meeting. And we will indeed start off if we see some of those hands raised with a privilege of the floor where you have three minutes to address the board, the planning board in this case. And Catherine and/or Charles, if as you see people waiting in the waiting room, if you could let them in, I would appreciate that. So before we kick into privilege of the floor, what I do want to just review briefly is the different roles of the planning board and the review board. And in this case, also the town board in town governance so that you can target your comments in the way that's most effective. So first off, we, the planning board, and some of you would have seen this in an email that went out on Town List Surf. I know not everyone is on that list surf, so I'm going to go over the ground again. But the planning board is responsible for overall vision and planning and advice and sort of philosophy about growth and development and what are things to are important to preserve and protect about Caroline. In that role, we advise the town board, but we do not basically review any specific projects. The review of a specific project falls to the review board and they are having a meeting tonight at 7 o'clock at which they are be presented the proposal for development along Route 79. So if you have comments specific to that proposal, the best place to make them is to the review board. And if you have more general comments about sort of what your vision is for the what Caroline Caroline is and should be, how it should or should not allow certain kinds of development or whatever, this is the right place. If you want to change in town law, this is the right place to be. If you want to talk about a moratorium, that is in the hands of the town board. And so unless they refer that question to us, the planning board for advice, right now, the question of whether or not to hold a moratorium on items subject to site plan or subdivision review is in the hands of the town board. And so if you want to speak to that question, you should give your feedback to the town board, not to either the review board or the planning board. So with that little bit of background, the next thing I want to mention is the difference between a comprehensive plan, which is what we actually are in the middle of working on revising us, the planning board, and town law. A comprehensive plan is a very important document that lays out the vision and goals of what a community is and wants to be. But in of itself, it doesn't say you can't do X or something like that. That takes a law. And so the enactment of the comprehensive plan into town law is what gives it sort of teeth. And so I just wanted to make sure that people are understanding, you know, what the town, the conference plan can and can't do. It is an important guidance document, but until it is acted on by the town board and enacted into law, it just sits there. So there, there's that. Okay. So are there people that I see at least one hand raised? And so if you would like to address the planning board, please use your your hand raising icons now and we will go through that. Catherine, who is on the planning board, is acting as one of the co-hosts. Say again. Catherine?
I only see currently.
Yes, I do too. So I'm telling you, if anyone else wants to, this is the time to indicate that you'd like to address the board. But we will, I think, open it up to Alita Geida to talk to us. And Catherine will act as timer. And I guess I will go ahead and do the unmuting right now. And so here we go. So Alita, you have been unmuted. Hopefully you can talk to us.
Yes, thank you. My name is Alita Geida and I appreciate the time to speak and I'll be very brief. I am an attorney at Couch White in Albany and I represent Franklin Land Associates, the entity seeking to develop the retail convenience store on Route 79. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your clarification as to the roles of the board. I think that's very helpful here. We agree with you that the planning board's comprehensive plan function is not related to the site plan review function that the review board will be carrying out tonight. And I think that the comprehensive plan process should stick to, as you stated, the, you know, townwide zoning visions for the town. We would be happy to give the board information about the location of the project because the, you know, the town website mentioned that that was a question the board had. If there's anything that Franklin Land Associates can do to help educate you on the location, we're happy to do that. And thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so Alita, just quickly say, yeah, I'm going to show a brief map that shows the basic location. And my understanding is that the review board will be getting detailed information. If I don't get or we don't get, you know, from the review board, any other info that we need about the specifics of the project, we will be in touch. But again, my intent here is just that everyone be on the same page and know roughly where this is. The details are all under the review board. And so I don't anticipate really needing anything else. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the board as part of privilege of the floor? I am not seeing anything else. Anybody else? Okay. Okay. So that what I'm going to indeed, I'm going to try this, I'm going to try share my screen and show you guys a picture. This one here. All right, hopefully you are all seeing some kind of map now. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so here's Route 79. And down here is Brooktondale. Out here is Slaterville Springs over in the east. And Landon Road intersects Route 79 here. And there is the approximate location of this proposed development. The development required a subdivision of a parcel. And that subdivision action was reviewable by the review board. There, I wanted to let residents of the town of Caroline know that most subdivision actions that residents are concerned with, small lot line adjustments or subdividing for residential development are not subject to review. But since this is not one of those exempted subdivisions, it came up for review. So the reason the review board is reviewing this is that we have a subdivision review law that this project fell under. And that's why the review is taking place. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say about the basics of the project. Anybody else on the planning board want to contribute anything? Okay, so I'm going to stop that share. Okay. And then I see a couple of people on the waiting list that they can be let in and that'd be great. All right, so in terms of the existing comprehensive plan. And then, of course, I don't have those notes with me. All right, I have to pop it on my screen. So the existing comprehensive plan does have language that relates to business and business development in the town. So since we are going to be talking about our comprehensive plan in this meeting, I thought would be worth sort of summarizing or going over that. And I sent planning board members a very late email with some of that language. And I'm going to see if I can find it on my computer now. So forgive me for a moment while I focus on something else here. There we go. Okay. So some of the sort of stuff that the comprehensive plan says right now is the places value on green space and open space in the town. Says, under the 20-year vision, green space is plentiful, enabling sustainable agricultural and forest production, reducing pollution, providing outdoor recreational opportunities, preserving biodiversity and the rural views. Sprawl is limited because development is concentrated in housing-focused areas and the hamlets of Brooktondale and Slaterville Springs. And this general concept of development being concentrated in the hamlets runs throughout the comprehensive plan. So that is one of the first places it shows up. Another emphasis in the existing plan is often on local businesses and small businesses. It says, for example, in that 20-year vision, the local economy flourishes with locally owned small businesses. Skattered throughout Caroline, the businesses complement the peaceful rural nature of the town. The prospering local hamlets support diversity of local businesses and are boosted by increased pedestrian and bicycle traffic due to increased housing density there. Brooktondale has developed a small but viable commercial center. Residents take pride in supporting these local businesses, which allow the town to maintain a modest level of economic self-sufficiency. So again, those sort of things come various points in the document as well. And I'm not going to, I have like two and a half pages of quotes. I'm not going to read all of it as those are a couple of examples. I will say that it mentions things about strengthening the hamlets because that will help maintain the rural character by reducing pressure on surrounding rural areas. And that includes both housing density and business development. Various comments about open space. And in particular, an important point made that high-quality open land is unmatched in agricultural productivity, recreational opportunities and environmental attributes. Although the economic value of open land is often difficult to estimate, it is often greater than comparable developed land. Significant economic value may result from investment in open space protection. Now, this is obviously an unquantified statement, but was the sense of the town that there was a great value in open land for the various reasons mentioned. There is a whole section on small business in the existing comprehensive plan and talks a bit about supporting a diverse mix of local businesses with support for increasing support for retail trade in the hamlets. It also talks about finding a balance between supporting a vital locally owned business community interspersed across the town and supporting quality of rural residential life poses a significant challenge. And I think the last thing I will well, maybe that's good enough for now. It does look at, there's also language about agricultural land that's probably worth keeping in mind. It says, for example, that a significant acreage of prime and good soil has already been lost through development. A substantial portion of the remaining viable agricultural soil lies along Route 79 and will likely give way to future development if no action is taken. And it mentions that good agricultural soils are an irreplaceable natural resource. Nearly impossible to restore once disturbed through development. So there's significant language in the existing comprehensive plan that discusses development. So I'm trying to close something here. There we go. In the context of the values of Caroline. So I just wanted to summarize that. And I guess I want to open it up now to the planning board to for comments and what they want to say. As we, the next stage of our, our meeting will be to discuss where we go from here in terms of that language and in terms of how we want to move forward in terms of gathering public input. So thoughts, anyone?
I'll just say, I'm Charles. I'm on the planning board. It's exciting to see everybody here tonight. I noticed a lot of names that were at some of the public outreach sessions over the last year for the comprehensive plan revision that we're in the midst of putting some of the final touches on. We're sort of getting closer to that. And so I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight, coming out, staying in tonight, maybe. And being a part of this process because we're here to listen and it's exciting to see the community energized. And through your input, the plan will only get better. And I appreciate, Bill, you clarifying sort of the role of the planning board because there's been a lot of communication spreading out across the community as people become energized. And it's really important to understand where you can spend your energy most efficiently and to what end. And and really understanding our town does it a little differently than other towns do by splitting up the planning board and the subdivision board and having them have different names even than some other communities around us. So appreciate you guys sort of bearing with us because it's our first time meeting by Zoom. So it's fun to do our first Zoom meeting in front of an audience of 30 people or so. And we're excited to continue to play out this process. So thanks. That's all I wanted to say.
Catherine, you are somehow muted.
I wasn't speaking to the meeting.
Got it. All right, anybody else on the planning board want to offer any comments right now? And their thoughts on the existing language in the the comp plan, anything else to the watching public?
Well, I don't know whether it's appropriate to also mention though that we're that we're in the midst of the of a sort of the updating of that comprehensive plan, right? And that that we intend to distribute very soon to the whole public. And that has to do with, you know, bringing the thing and Ed, it's great to see that Ed's here too, who had a lot to do with the, the setting up of the, the surveys and things and the public input that we had in terms of what we need to really focus on. Because the world's quite a bit different actually than it was in 2006 when that plan was produced. And we feel quite obliged to be able to update it in terms of what the sort of new needs are and the new perceptions of the town and it's in its future are. And of course, everything that's, the most important things are the things that have to do with the welfare of everybody who's, who's here. And we're very concerned with that. And we, and everybody can look forward to having, having us annoy you some more for more input on this as it proceeds.
And let me, let me second that, that in the way we have viewed this document is that we're trying to distill sort of the community input and the community vision. And so we're doing our best at that, but that works best when we get that input. So once the, we are working on current drafts, once the draft is released to the town, we will be having some public hearings and it'll be great to, to hear from a lot of you at that time. Because that's the only way that we can make sure that, that it actually meets the, the needs and vision of the town. All right. If nobody else on the board wants to say something specifically about, you know, the existing comp plan language, what I would like to move on to is thoughts, you know, on how to move forward. We will eventually, near the end of our meeting, start looking at the drafts that we have. But my understanding, and Charles, you can, can correct me, is that, you know, the language specific to small businesses hasn't changed a lot since that was the section that you were most working on. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think you summed it up. It uses so much of the same language as you quoted at the start, Bill, is, is in this draft section that we were calling livability, which, which includes both sort of the where we live and kind of how we live here. So everything from housing and roads to emergency services to local economy. So that, that same language that you spoke of is still a part of this as well as so from one of the things we got feedback during the listening sessions that we did last year was the, the, a lot of people expressed a desire to for the town to somehow take a more active role in maintaining a local, a vibrant local economy and, and to have that economy be in line with sort of the agricultural rural aspects of the, of where we live. So that's reflected in the plan, in, in the current draft of the livability section. And I'm not sure if maybe Catherine also has some text in the, her section that she's been working on that might also relate to local business or development in general. And I think the general, yeah, so I don't know if you want to touch.
Well, I guess I would just say that in terms of, you know, the overarching vision and are we serving our vision of the town in terms of preserving rural character and then even defining rural character, you know, texturally, that's been my emphasis in terms of the plan. I think it's fair to say that throughout all of the public meetings, this desire to preserve rural character, however people define that, is a common thread, right? And certainly in terms of the preservation of rural character and in my section of the plan, it is known. And really, it's just not arguable that our, the biggest threat to our rural character in our town in particular is that we have limited, if any, land use designation and land use, you know, limits. And so what we're seeing now with this one particular project, right, is just an example of that. And so I think the question of how we move forward, you know, that's the question, that's the big question, right? But there are a bunch of different ways we can move forward. Whether or not the language is in the plan to designate that, because as we've said, that the plan is a vision. The plan is not law in and of itself, right? It might support law and it might support policy. And I certainly, you know, it's my belief that that's, that's its role and I hope it does do that. But yes, I mean, the rural preservation of rural character is not compatible with unlimited development in our town.
Okay, and just to, I can add one thing, Bill, you know, to just show the other side of this when we're talking about development, how it's a complicated issue and how it could benefit from strategic, you know, a strategy of the town on how to develop could be all different kinds of development. Cell towers are an important thing, both for our community to do business, to communicate with each other, to be safe, for EMS to be able to use to get around, yet that requires putting cell towers in places, right? And so we could put them sort of, I won't say willy-nilly, because there is some, you know, guiding, someone's figuring out where to put them. Or the town could prioritize, you know, where it makes the most sense to maintain these other things that the town has set at values. And so there's also language in this section, because right now I think everybody's focused on one kind of development, maybe. But there's lots of different kinds of development that we also, as I've heard from the community, as we've all heard from the community, that we want. We want the ability to communicate well. So that also can, the things we want can also benefit from planning. So there's language in the section on livability that speaks to the idea that having some planning around site locations for cell towers or for building out cell tower infrastructure that makes sense, not just for getting cell service, but also to maintain the other priorities of the town is, is goal worthy. And that's why it's a goal expressed within this larger vision of how the town could grow.
Okay. Look, I just, Tim, yeah, go ahead.
That occurred to me as you were talking and reading the language of the plan. I'm Tim Murray. I'm on the town board and I'm the town board liaison to the planning board. One of the things that struck me recently in rereading the comprehensive plan as it currently stands, and I remember this from when it was drafted initially, is the emphasis on the hamlets of Slaterville and Brooktondale. I think, I think that one of the things that I'd encourage you to consider as you tweak this is, is the parameters of what that means. At the time when the initial comprehensive plan was being drafted, I was concerned that a very strong mixture of domestic housing and agricultural land is densely situated at the western end of the town, especially along 79, say roughly from, say roughly from Snyder Hill Road down to Bessmer. And in that, in that cluster, there are about 100 domestic houses and three or four apartment buildings in that cluster. And my, my concern is that we, when we, when we say Brooktondale, we usually mean down in Brooktondale. So it's just something that I thought I'd, I'd bring up.
Okay. Good point. What do we mean? So, yeah, I think we may have to delete that a little bit better. So I'd appreciate those comments, Tim. So it appears to me, and I think some of you have heard this from me already, that specifically for the comprehensive plan language, we have several paths forward. Knowing again that we're going to be releasing a draft in another probably couple of months to, to the public. One is, since there's lots of language in there already about rural character that seems consistent with the sort of stuff we've been, been talking about, to leave that language as is. And in response to citizen feedback at public hearings, if they, if it seems to be a desire to have stronger or different language to take that feedback and modify the sections. So that's one way forward. Another would be to say, okay, it's clear, based on the reaction to this proposed development, that there are strong feelings in the town, but also that maybe because there hadn't been much commercial development, that there hadn't been a lot of thinking prior to this going into it. So what we should do, we didn't gather much information already. So let's go ahead and hold a hearing specifically on that question, like we had our other workshops. So this means you had another workshop and gee, how do you do that in the time of COVID? Okay, so that is probably my least favorite option. The third option would be to go ahead and based on some of the knowledge all of us are, are getting and things we sent to us, to go ahead and insert strength in language a bit with the assumption that if that's not what people want, we're going to hear that at the public hearings and tell us to back off. And I'm okay with really either leaving languages or strengthening language, putting trial language out there. Sometimes trial language is useful because it gives people things to really attach their comments to. And on the other hand, maybe it feels like it's too much guiding the horse. You should just let it go where it wants to go. So I am open to discussion right now on how we want to move forward. Catherine?
I thought I should take this up since, you know, I'm familiar with horses when you let them do what they want. They don't often do what you want them to do. So I would be advocating for minimally recommendations in our recommendation section, you know, in terms of actions, that one way to go would be, what I would like is for the language of formula business restrictions to be in our comprehensive plan somewhere in some capacity. Whether that's both in the text and then also as an actionable recommendation, whether that is an actionable recommendation, you know, in order to fulfill the vision hereby stated in this section, this is how we need to do that. But I think that that as a specific strategy is something I, I feel pretty strongly about as something that would help our town on its own, even without broad land use restrictions and changes. Because I think that's going to be a harder process, quite honestly, than saying, okay, well, there's going to be some development. And when that happens, not if, but when that happens, what is that going to be like and look like and feel like for our town? And can we have that development be in keeping with the values that we want in our town? And the way to do that is with formula business restrictions, in my view.
Anybody else?
From that, just another additional comment, I think from the.
Tim, I go Val first and then you.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
All right. No, I, well, I've been very much in, very much concerned about the notion of the formula business concept. And it's something that we really have to look at. I mean, it was brought up by a number of people in the, in the surveys, especially in the written parts of the surveys that we did when we were looking to revise the plan or to update the plan. A number of people said that they really didn't want Caroline to become the, the strip, the Elmira Road, you know, coming, entering Ithaca from the other side. And that was a fairly important thing that we, it wasn't something that we were really beginning to think about that much. Because I think, again, in, in 2006, there didn't seem to be that much concern about that, that kind of development happening on, on Route 79. And the other issue that was happening with this, the idea of trying to emphasize Speedsville and Brooktondale and, and Slaterville Springs as centers should try to develop the hamlets had to do with a very conscientious knowledge that with the exception of Slaterville Springs, of Brooktondale, which is the largest of, of the hamlets, is actually off Route 79, right? It requires a sort of diversion to be able to go there. And that's what many people seem to have actually liked, was the idea that these are, that we do have this, this rural characteristic to the hamlets. The notion of the formal, the formula business thing has to do with. thing has to do with, I think it taps upon probably the rural character almost more than anything else, I believe, because it has to do with the idea that, that a formula business is by nature, something that's identifiable everywhere. It's a, it's a sort of stereotypical project that has a, that has, you know, signage and everything that has to do with some sort of national identity that's spread all over versus something that's specific to locations, you know, and to certain kind of areas. So that's, those are the parts of the issues that we're, that I think we're dealing with. And then also the fact that we've had planners from Cornell speak to us and from other places say that, that we, that there's a different kind of urgency that we have here in Caroline now, that, that all the other towns around us are beginning to involve, invoke restrictions on certain kinds of businesses and that we are probably going to find ourselves being the dumping ground for businesses that can't get permissions to be built anywhere else, unless we somehow make sure that there's a, that there's an ethic or a morality to what it is that we want this place to look like. And that's what I said.
All right. And Tim, I have you going to second. I do, Val, one thing I didn't read off the things, the quotes I'd pulled was indeed a sentiment like what you just expressed that, that as other areas around Caroline have more restrictive regimes, that indeed that leaves Caroline increasingly vulnerable perhaps to the least desirable businesses. That was one of the sentiments expressed in the previous, the current iteration of the comprehensive plan. So, Tim, you had something you wanted to say?
I was just going to add that the comprehensive plan will give guidance to the town board in terms of its ability to consider or debate various alternatives. So I think it's, I would encourage the planning board to keep an open eye about that and to be as inclusive as possible in the language.
Okay. And what I am going to say, so Catherine made a definite suggestion that we put some kind of language, particularly you were saying formula business restriction in, in the document. What I would say is today, the decision is, yeah, do we decide to put something new in? And next meeting, after we've had some more time to think and constate and get feedback is, is what we put in. But I appreciate hearing from you. This is the sort of thing you want to do. And I also have various ideas, but what I really want to know is, yeah, should we try to draft some language? That's something we're going to do or not. And so I have heard from Catherine, Charles, Val, how are you feeling about whether to insert new language now or, or wait till after the public hearing? If it's required?
I, you know, I think it's fine. I was just going, as we were talking, I was going through all the feedback back that we got during the livability listening sessions last year and all the stuff that was submitted by survey, just to do a quick overview, trying to figure out, trying to find specific things that came out about businesses. And there was a very broad local business push. There was very little said specifically about formula businesses or big chains or anything like that. I think to my point, I, you know, like, I kind of like the idea of putting language in, even if it's just a goal or a strategy, it doesn't have to be a full worked out section, because there's already language that is sitting there talking about development that is in line with our X, Y, and Z, that kind of stuff, that that could be a goal or a strategy for getting there. The one thing I, I feel somewhat, you know, a formula business, as I understand it, is such a broad term, that I also don't know if it's, if that is what the community wants. It might be in this one case, what we're hearing the most about, but you know, maybe if a really popular, you know, food restaurant wanted to open up on 79 that everybody likes, like holy cow, it's coming, coming to town.
I just want to clarify, though, I think it's important to clarify, especially since we have so many people in the meeting, that the restriction does not mean that the business doesn't come in. That doesn't mean that at all. It means it's like, so for people who are not familiar, it's like if you've ever seen a McDonald's that is like covered with Clappard and shingles in Stovermont, for example, right? That's a formula business restriction. So it's not that McDonald's didn't come in, it's that it looks and feels different, right? So I didn't mean to interrupt you, but just to share, there's, there's 100 different ways it can look. It does not mean, so Starbucks wants to come in, Starbucks needs to look like a barn, right? For as an example.
Right. And I think, I think to me, that's where the, the broadness of the language as it is right now, I think having something like a formula business restriction could be helpful because it changes sort of the, you know, especially the look or the style of the places. Right now, there's much more of a aspirational vision for the kinds of places the town says they want here. And so, you know, I don't know, sort of as a goal, really, all I've really mostly heard through listening has been focused on local business. And so it's, it's, it's sort of a, by definition, not formula business, right? So we could put that in there with the idea of there being an opportunity for people to tell us how much they like formula businesses, I guess, afterwards. That would be the kind of feedback that we might get. But I'm, but I think up to this point, outside of the very current issue that's going to be talked about later on 79, we haven't heard a lot of specifically these kind of, I haven't, in, you know, in these listening sessions. And that's my only hesitance towards just putting it in right now, you know, instead of the broad language that kind of, kind of takes care of that right now.
All right, Val, you're one of the ones that brought up formula business restrictions because through your background as an architect, anything more you want to add about that?
Well, I mean, the, I mean, the, the point is, and I think Catherine's absolutely right, that it's, it, the, it's just a phrase that's actually appeared recently in a lot of areas where there is an attempt to try to sort of improve and focus the quality of, of the locals in terms of having local goods, having, you know, better goods perhaps than is offered through a kind of wholesale distributors and things like that. But also it, it, it has more to do with the way something sort of addresses the community versus the idea that a, something is, a business has, is addressing a larger framework in terms of it's, it's a larger, I don't know, financial output. In other words, it has a different goal, a financial model that is independent of that of the town and the locations that it's in. So the, the formula businesses though, have, as Catherine points out, too, adapted sometimes, you know, they would, would make sure that they don't have big parking lots that are visible to everybody, that they don't have signs that would contribute to the light pollution and area, and that they don't, you know, and that they don't have structures that are just wholly sort of, I guess, at odds with the local sort of context. And so that's one of the things, but the, in a way, the, I don't think it's a specific attitude about just these businesses. I think it has to do with the idea that the original plan was also, does mention a kind of concern about heavy industry, about giant warehouses and other kinds of constructions that would actually add nothing to the sort of local ambience. And the aspect of what makes Caroline special from all the other towns that are around it. At the same time, one of the things we should point out is that we, according to the state, we, we're actually a percentage wise, in terms of population, increasing much more rapidly than virtually the most other towns in, in the, in the state. And that because of this, that's why the original plan, from my understanding, also emphasized that we, that we have to propagate the development of small businesses in a, in a thoughtful and, and more controlled way, right? So that we can deal with these things in our town.
All right, great. I guess two of the things I want to throw out along that regard, I mean, another restriction that I've seen some communities do is a density restriction, essentially, you know, you can't have another store like this within X miles in our community. So that's another concept out there. And a final one is to look at the economic impact of development. That is, you know, a store coming in is one thing, but of course there are ripple effects, either positive or negative, on the surrounding retail community. And a lot of folks have brought up concerns, obviously about Brooklyn's market, having competition and all that sort of stuff. So, you know, that's not really our direct concern, but the general question of should there be essentially some principle of looking at the pros and cons of the economic balance would be another possible piece of language to include in the comprehensive plan. And those are called, I think, economic impact review laws or something like that.
Yeah, I also wanted to just emphasize, I agree with you. And I think that one, the way I see this is like in layers, right? It's like just a system, you know, like a community level approach to, to development, right? And so there's, there's aesthetics, which, you know, you might not want a McDonald's at all, right? Just to use that example. That might be an overall goal that like, we don't want McDonald's. And that's one set of policies and one set of, you know, legislative action. But if they're going to come in, at least it needs to, you know, fulfill all these things that Val just shared, right? But I think the language, I don't have it exactly, but what was coming to mind as you were speaking was something to the effect of, you know, formula business restrictions such that, that are consistent with the vision that's outlined in the comprehensive plan. Because I also want to be really nimble and not say like, we want this, because maybe it's great for Starbucks, like a barn now, but 30 years from now, we're going to think that doesn't look very nice. And so that's not going to be something that, you know, is a nimble document. It has to be something that the, the development and the aesthetic and the, you know, social justice elements of the business or whatever we want to say are like consistent with the vision that is outlined in the plan. And then if the plan is continuing to change in accordance with what the community wants, then to me that seems like the best meshing of it.
Agreed. I mean, again, our, our job is not to write the specific proposals of you should pass X. Our guidance to the town board is here are, you know, the concerns and here's some strategies to possibly get there. And we can, you know, doesn't mean that implement every strategy, but one strategy might be a formula business thing. But, you know, the language of that is going to be crafted, obviously by the town board or maybe by committee, or maybe you should look at an economic review law. So what we're calling for in the plan is town board, you should be thinking about this because that addresses the concerns the community have brought up. And we don't have to get bogged down in every little detail of what it would look like, because really that's not our, our job or our ability.
Great. So are we, we're then in agreement that we want additional language? Because right now, as it stands, I don't think there's enough language in there to really say that.
I am thinking, I think I've got a definite agreement from you and Val and Charles too. And okay, so I think that we will put something in there. And so to the, the general public there, feel free to send us ideas. This is something that we are learning more about, but it seems like it might help address some of the concerns of the community. So if you've got some, some good resources, having a lot of people look is, is always very helpful. So you can send those, the, the planning board email address is given on the town board website. And it's a little hard to find, be able to look under something and find committees and find us. But it's also in the email that was sent out recently for the announcement for this meeting. So I think enough said on that topic. Are we done? That one?
Well, just one, one general point of like question is, do we want to discuss it all right now, where we think that, that language would fit best? Or do we want to develop the language? Because I mean, like the way that it's written, it could be written and fit into the livability section, it could be written and fit into the rural character section. So, but it might be written slightly differently, depending on where we stick it. So I'm happy to talk about it later, or, you know, we can draft something and see.
Sure. Let's talk a little bit about now. And just for the, the benefit of those watching, the, our vision of the revised comprehensive plan is, has much of the content of the existing comprehensive plan, but reorganized a bit. And we have reorganized it into three major sections along the lines of the workshops that were held now about a year and a half ago. So one section, as Charles mentioned, is called sort of like the livability in Caroline. It has a lot of sort of quality of life issues. Another section is environmental protection and natural resources. And so it talks a lot about, you know, open space and what the natural resources of Caroline are. And the third section is called rural character and considers itself as trying to preserve this somewhat amorphous concept we all have, that we like the rural nature of Caroline. And so those are the broad outlines of the comprehensive plan. And these areas all overlap. Having open space, which protects the environment, is part of having rural character, right? Having, you know, good internet facilities helps support local businesses and everything becomes overlapping. But that's why we chose these divisions to sort of show that, yeah, these like, of course they overlap and everything affects everything else, but this seemed to be a reasonable lumping of, of things together. So I agree with Charles, it's unclear where this would best go, or maybe again, because overlaps both places, looks like Val wants us to talk, and then Catherine.
No, well, I, well, I just think that it's, that actually the, the overlap is, is fine. I think it can be located in certain places specifically, because there are certain subsections that has to deal with transportation, infrastructure and other things where, that are, would also be heavily affected by the changing of routes and roads and, you know, the additional traffic that would be, have to be placed. And then in terms of the environmental thing that Charles talked about, I mean, that, that this was defined in the plan as dealing with various forms of pollution, including light pollution, as well as the kind of, the more physical pollution that you get from, from, you know, carbon emissions and things like that. And, and even, well, the sort of refuse that one gets generated in a, in certain kind of places. So in a way, it is something where I think that there will be undoubtedly places scattered all throughout the plan, that people will have to look for and to see, because it's going to be, it's, it's, it isn't one topic.
Catherine, do you want to add to that?
No, I agree. I totally agree. Just taking notes.
All right, that's great. I guess my take on it would tend to be that the, the bulk or the main thrust or particularly where the recommendations part are, might be under livability, because that's where we tend to put the business stuff right now. But I think that reference should be made to it in other sections as appropriate, which as we've done with, with other things. So that there would probably be some language in the rural character section that, that picks up on that, that's saying to help preserve rural character, da, 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 da.
I guess, I guess maybe I will add that given the, the way it's written now actually does provide for additional guidance and, you know, intentional framing of development for the rural character. So we could add something additional in there, but the way it's phrased now, it's, it's, I tried to make it pretty clear that, that we're at risk because of this issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, I think both, I think everybody's hitting on something here that will want to maybe treat it in both of those sections and even potentially in the, in the environmental, natural resources where we talk a lot about water, you know, there may be, you know, some language there that would just speak to the fact that, and I think it may already, if I remember, there might be something related between water and development in there. But the point being that, you know, as it stands right now, the way our community's resources are distributed, it's, it's not entirely easy necessarily to develop broadly at scale because we don't have the resources, sort of the, the infrastructural resources. And because the resources we do have are squirreled away in aquifers and things like that, when it comes to providing the necessary water for things to actually get built. So, you know, that's where most everybody gets their water from around here. And so to have businesses potentially larger, non-local businesses maybe sucking a lot of that up. You know, if Nestle were to come in and want to do a water bottling plant on the incredible water of Sladeville Springs, you know, and started sucking up millions of bottles, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay. All right. So it looks like we'll have a little bit everywhere. And again, it may, you know, some of it may tie most easily next to where we're going to have other business discussion. All right.
redundancy might be important. I wish, you know, like if it's in every section, then great, because it's a theme then, and it's consistent with the vision and so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm going to insert an item on our agenda. Our next meeting, which is currently May something, 20, someone has it there, I'm sure.
Back when we thought there was a graduation weekend.
Right. This, this was back, back when, when in the middle of May, I was going to be in Indiana watching my daughter graduate, who is now, you know, sulking in the basement. But so I think the meeting, the night we chose overlaps with the watershed committee. So I would like us to change either the time or the date. And I am proposing actually that we go to maybe three weeks from now, if that works for you guys. Because again, you know, Cornell's schedule is all different, then I won't be gone.
We're not going anywhere. So, yeah.
Right. Yeah. I wanted to sort of shorten the cycle. Right. Yeah, I want to sort of shorten the cycle to sort of maybe have a couple of meetings at three weeks apart so we can help move the draft along a bit faster. But Charles, you had your hand raised. You're muted now, Charles, but you're okay with that. Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right, three weeks from now would be somewhere in the week of May 11th. So how does either May 11th, 12th, or 14th look for you guys?
11th or 12th is great for me.
I hear a groan from Val, which probably means nothing works.
Yeah, that's the week of of all of the final reviews here.
All right.
They have a tendency to to go on, it depends on the time, I guess. If we did it later with our later time, which, I mean, I like five o'clock actually, but.
Well, what time would you propose?
I suppose we, if we maybe six o'clock on the 11th or 12th.
Works for me. Anybody else? For me, probably, that doesn't matter. Doesn't really matter.
I'd probably go for the 12th over the 11th, just because the start of the week, it's hard to know when the week starts right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Old constructs from the before times.
Yeah, Tim, does that, those dates work for you?
Good for me.
Okay. All right. So we will go on May 12th at six o'clock.
Okay.
All right, great. Okay. So I'd like to move on to talking about the language that we do have in our revised drafts. I had a little computer blow up this afternoon, of course, that they sort of timing. So I couldn't print off some things I wanted to have in my hands right now. So for example, I even have my draft that I've worked on, the environmental protection and natural resources section in front of me. But I do, nothing's changed from what you guys saw, but I'm, a few things have been delayed. I'm waiting to hear back from someone at the Cornell Botanical Gardens who will help me with the unique natural areas description. And hopefully that will be, be happening. And I did get some, some other comments back that I did share my draft with with Don Barber, and he made some, some good suggestions. But again, I can't pull it up to tell you what they are right now. Some of you probably have those.
Yeah.
But basically, is there anything that you guys want to talk about in terms of the language of that section or things to include? Or I know we had talked about the land use land cover map. And this will come up more in the snapshot of growth later. The land use land cover data that was in the report of natural area, of the whatever the, you know, the environmental report prepared for Caroline, actually had an error in it that that Osama and I discovered as we dug through historical data. And that has now been corrected in the data I have. I assume they will correct the, the natural resource inventory at some point. But I now have data from three different time periods on land use and land cover in Caroline. And whether that goes here or in snapshot of growth, probably the latter, I have some of that data with me now. We can, I can share that a little bit later in the meeting. Other than that, there's not too many revisions that I was planning on, other than maybe some stronger language on wetlands and other stuff that Don had suggested that to go through his suggestions. But any other comments right now? Okay, that looks like none. Everyone can hear me still, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So yeah, there is some tightening up and addition to that section, and then there'll be time for more comments. In terms of the rural character section.
I'm trying to pull this, I have two screens in my life at the moment. You just sent the, what I'm trying to look at for is Don's marked up copy.
Yeah, right. I sent that out. I can't access it right now either.
Okay.
I have the version that Don commented on.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Catherine, do you want Val to share anything from that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess off on that Val, and I did, I read through them. I wasn't super clear on, like, I agreed with a bunch of his comments, but I wasn't super clear on like which particular pieces that.
You've broken up a little bit.
Just a conceptual.
Right, I think, breaking up too.
So Catherine, you broke up a bit there. You're, you're on satellite now? Or no, you had something else though. But anyway, your bandwidth got limited there. AT&amp;T. Yeah, I'm sure you're happy with them.
Look, there are four try. There, I'm actually on a Zoom, so that is success. This is Caroline's success right here. Um, Val, I was just, if you, if you had comments since this is in front of you, I mean, I wasn't clear. They were like broad conceptual comments, but I wasn't sure it was like a particular edit per se.
No, I thought, I, yeah, I thought that they were just comments also. I mean, mostly, I mean, they didn't seem to be contradictory. I mean, it might, it was always like, you might want to look at this or may include this or something like that, but.
Yeah, there was, there was one suggestion in there about adding a section about local economy. But that was before he, he hasn't seen the livability draft, so.
Right.
But the discusses types of businesses, impact on rural character, local economy, environment and commercial retail.
Well, isn't that timely?
Well, again, some of the language was there, he just wasn't seeing it, of course, because he was not seeing the whole thing. All right. So I want to throw out the the following idea, and Catherine's aware of this, she and I talked about this a couple of months ago. Just the overall tenor, I just want to make sure everyone's happy with because it, the document, this section of document feels more sort of academic than the others. And that's neither a good thing or a bad thing necessarily, but in terms of the tone and the motivation, where again, the motivation of the comprehensive plan is that it's grounded in the community. And a lot of the stuff in here certainly is because it's talking about, you know, the ag districts and everything. But the, the, the part that's sort of appealing to outside sources of rural character definition, I was sort of wondering about. So I just was wanting Charles and Val, sort of your take on, I'm happy with it to go as is. But what was your sort of gut sense when reading it? Did you, you know, like the tone or, you know, wanted again, little to me, less academic? Charles?
And I would, I would agree that it, you know, especially the first paragraph, I would say comes across as a bit academic. I, I do like the idea there being multiple definitions of what it means to be rural because it is an abstract concept. And so trying to ground what, you know, where we're planting our flag in the idea of rural is a helpful thing to understand what the size of the field is we're planting our flag in. So, you know, I think that, to me, that's what this first paragraph is about, is that it's a, it's a, it's a broad concept that means a lot of, that can mean a lot of different things. And whether or not it needs an exact, like enumeration of each definition, I'm not, I could probably go either way. But at the same time, I think it's useful in a way to provoke the broadness of the concept because we were each bringing what we think rural means to the table. And this is sort of establishing a framework to read the rest of that section in. But tone wise, I would say that first, especially the first paragraph comes across as academic because it, because it's just, you know, it's written very like, I guess academically.
Well, in the corollary to that, is that a problem, right? So it's not necessarily a problem. So but it, but it's a question, it's a question I wanted to bring up because it, it feels very different from a listed document, which again, doesn't mean it's good or bad, but I just wanted to sort of open it up to to committee discussion. And I will take the moment to apologize to all the attendees at this point. The draft, of course, has not been released in general, and that's happening probably in four to six or eight weeks from now. So we are talking about something that you're listening to us say words, you have no idea what we're talking about. So you just bear with us as we sort of hassle over language. But anyway, so sorry, Val, I don't know if you're going to say something.
Well, I don't mind per se that something sounds academic. But I guess the thing is, if, if it's going to be sort of bedside reading, it's probably a little tough. But, you know, I, I find that actually it gets, it, it, near the end is where it really gets quite strong in terms of the idea of of identifying exactly grappling with that issue of what rural is. I would almost sort of reverse some of the things. I think that that one section on addressing change might be part of goals. Of a goal oriented thing. Did you lose me?
I know, I heard you. I'm, I'm, I'm just not following what you said.
Oh, there's one section on changing agricultural landscape and strategies for addressing. That seems to be the one that, and the, and maybe the one before ends up, a part of it ends up having more sources cited for looking into and ways of addressing the thing, which has to do really with the, with almost the preliminaries of an action plan, which I think is a great thing to have in there. There. But it, maybe it shouldn't come so early in the document. I mean, the ones after that, I thought read really well, especially the sections on current trends seems to deal with exactly some of the things that are happening. And then development and residential growth, I think, is, is for me, really a very important thing because it also, it addresses the, 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 the ironies and the paradoxes of all of this kind of thing that, you know, Caroline's growing, we want to retain the, the rural character, how do you do that?
Okay. And this maybe, I was reading my old notes, similar to what you were just saying, Val, that, because there were a couple of sections that sort of were brought along from the existing comprehensive plan that, as Catherine said, these sort of feel a little weird or out of place. And to me too, it felt like that the development section, which currently ends it, could come as closer to the front, right after a definition of rural character. And sort of the ag landscape and current trend sections follows. That that'd be sort of roughly my take also.
Sir, I keep losing you because I have, I have a fireplace in between me and the thing right now. And it seems to be sapping the signal.
Okay. All right.
I, I just moved the grading too.
Okay. Well, thank Charles and Catherine heard that at least, right? All right. Okay. Is there feedback for Charles? I mean, are we done with that? Any of us want to say anything else about the rural character stuff? And Catherine, do you have enough to see if you want to change anything or?
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback. I mean, I think moving, my note that I just made was moving the development little snippet that we were trying to preserve from the old plan. I mean, my question at the outset of this was like, do we need that snippet? And we may, in which case, I mean, we can, I can certainly move it up into more of the purpose, you know, introduction and purpose is what I'm hearing, might be better. My other thought though is that as we move forward with more of the development and land use language that we just agreed we're going to craft, that might supplant.
Oh, yeah.
Little sentence in this section. So it might not even end up needing to be there, but I don't know yet.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? All right. So the livability section, which has a lot of the, sort of the nuts and bolts and details of what had been in, in the plan. And thoughts about that? As written.
That's one I can't seem to find.
Okay, I should have sent it out. I can't remember when I sent it out, a week and a half ago, maybe?
You sent it. April 13th.
I mean, I can speak, you know, just generally about it. This section sort of had most of the pieces that we talked to people about during the outreach sessions that needed sort of the least amount of, it appeared to from feedback, the least amount of additional content. There was some updating and then sort of fleshing out some of the smaller parts within it. Because surprisingly, many of the things that the initial plan had as priorities were still priorities for people, suggesting we still have, you know, progress to make as a town and in meeting those goals, which is, you know, it's good to, good to learn. So outside of updating some numbers, because the, the sections themselves that were there were still relevant. And then adding some content that reflected some of the information that we learned over the last year and a half. For example, the cell tower sighting that came up, emergency, emergency medical services was a big theme as well during those meetings. So I fleshed that out to reflect the feedback that we got. And then included a few more sentences specific about developments, low development of the local, of the locally owned businesses, local economy and, and recreation. So a little bit was just reorganizing. It's funny to think, you know, looking all the way back at when this was written, how, how similar, many of the same things that were driving that plan are still there, largely development and population pressure. And so many of the same things are still viewed as challenges to maintaining our way of life as well as new things like cell phone tower sightings and things that haven't gotten much improvement, housing stock, things like that. But in the interim, there's been lots of new programs that also state and county funded things. So, yeah, that was the gist of it.
Okay. Well, it looks like we each have to give it a little more detailed look and then get you some more feedback before the next meeting. So that'll be homework for everybody.
Great.
So I'm ready to move on to show a little bit of what I've been pulling together for the snapshot of growth. But before that, I do, we should probably just discuss. So in terms of trying to find some language to add regarding whether it's formula business restrictions or is general language about growth that we might add to this? How are we actually going to develop ideas and language? Each go off and work and think about it for a few weeks and discuss it next meeting? Or do you want to assign one person to be lead person to do that?
How do we feel about each of us taking a stab at some language for each of our sections in the actions section and then come together and see how that sounds? So like, I would say, you know, what would look reasonable for, for this section, the rural character section? Charles would say, what would he add to this list of? I'm looking at here, you said you have goals and then you have, oh, you have actions too, or goals and actions. So in your actions list, like what, I mean, because already you have established land use planning regulations that encourage locally owned businesses that integrate blah, blah, blah. There could be just like an IE format, you know, whatever language we want, but I don't think it's going to be hard because it's in there already. It's like begging for a solution.
Yeah. And that's where I, I agree. That's why I look at the broadness, like without, without having to invoke even more specific things. I feel like it's there, but I think it's also helpful to go ahead and do it because it just provides an example of the sorts of restrict, like the sorts of planning that we are able to do as a community that shouldn't be scary, it should be seen as an opportunity for us to take control of the things we already say we value and in a, in a planned way. You know, not in a controlling way, but just the fact that we can come up with a plan as a, as a town that takes into account more than just, you know, economics.
So can we each make a list and then come back to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Right.
That sounds like a plan.
And I can go through everybody's and the ones that I have and just see if there's a line, you know, that's something that is obvious that one could do.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right. So between COVID-19, which has sent like the planet, the, the Sharon Heller, who's been helping make maps, of course, has been at home and doesn't have the bandwidth to do maps from home and having to race over town to gather my daughter from Indiana, et cetera. I haven't done as much as I wanted on the snapshot of growth, but I have a few things to show. And also, of course, been a little busy the last couple of weeks with other issues here. But let me try to share screen again here, and this time it's this one. All right. So this is a map of housing. Alright, so, uh, this is a map of housing in Caroline, and I clearly got to make that bigger, I assume. If I can figure out how to do that from here.
That little 50% thing?
Yeah, 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 there we go, thank you. I actually want to get rid of this. Yeah, I don't know, yeah, unfortunately, you won't be able to see all of it, so let me get back to, there we go. Come on, you.
It's sunny, I would just like to say.
Yeah.
It's not hailing or snowing on our hill right now.
Wait five more minutes, then to sleep, we'll be back.
It's very beautiful out there.
Alright, so let's, alright, is that starting to show up for you guys, or should I zoom in some more? Let's see what I can do here. It's.
Tell us how important you think it is that we see all the dots, and then we'll tell you.
Well, you have to be able to tell it is between a red dot and a black dot, and that's what I think is probably not showing up very well. Yeah, alright, so the larger dots here are apartment buildings, basically three or four or more units. The smaller dots are all residential, basically houses. Sometimes there's a property with two houses on it, it's still just one dot. And what you can't see as well in this view is that some of these are red, and so I'm gonna have to, I did send you guys a PDF copy of this, but basically, red dots, I mean, you know, the, the density of black dots in these around Cedarville Springs, around Brookton Dale, and as Tim mentioned, you know, this development along the Route 79 corridor. Red dots are sort of scattered throughout town. What is not visible on this map is this big open field here is not really a big open field anymore, it is now the Boiseville development, and there wasn't a good way in the map to put that, so I basically had to add dots myself, and so there they are. Because basically, it's, it's a lot of separate buildings on one parcel, so the actual map we'll wind up with will look a bit more like this, so it gives a bit better sense of the housing density that developed there. That's not as many dots as there are buildings there. They've just all be a big mass, and I haven't thought of a good way to do that. So the bottom line picture, and these will hopefully look better in a actual document, is that there has been housing development and growth sort of throughout the town. And outside of this particular development, it hasn't necessarily been concentrated in the housing development areas cited in the plan. So while there was no intent in the comprehensive plan to limit where people could put houses, but a plea to try to develop closer to the Hamlets, it's not fully clear to me that was successful in terms of at least housing development, but that's, you know, that was an intentional outcome of the way that it, it was set up. So that's that. There's someone in the waiting room, I'm getting a message, because of my view, if someone could let them, I guess I can admit them myself, there we go. Okay, so. Catherine, okay?
Is there a name? Yeah.
Okay, I got him, alright. This is a different version, which is just, it's not really new development, this is commercial properties, which is, you'll see, there's not a lot in town. Let's see, let me read, the, the squares are ag, like basically horse farms, dairy farms, that kind of thing. There are some other commercial properties in town, you know, the ideal storage, the gravel pit, all come as commercial industrial, and so the triangles are commercial industrial, and the squares are more sort of rural ag type stuff. And you can see that there actually are very, very few, here's one, here's one, here's one, new red marks. That doesn't mean they have the new businesses in town, but a lot of them have replaced existing properties that were already commercial. And so I think part of why this current thing is a bit more controversial is because it's, it's not doing that. So they are scattered throughout the town, so these two maps, one of housing and one of commercial properties are likely what I was thinking of doing. We could combine the two, it got kind of busy, but I have, that's, I'm waiting for a final version of that from, from the Tompkins County Planning to see what really looks best, and so once I have those, I will ship those out to you guys again, and we can talk. So I did send you PDF versions, please take a look at those and send me any comments or changes that, that would be useful, but the idea particularly of this one is to sort of show where growth is happening, and I guess, hey, for the most part, it is scattered throughout town. Another map that I made is this one. Properties that have split or merged, so from the assessment department, you know, database, they have parcels, and sometimes parcels are split up into smaller parcels, and sometimes parcels are combined, that's, that's a merge. So all the green is parcels that have gotten merged over the last 15 years for one reason or another, and all the red is parcel have been split over the, for some reason, sometime over the last 15 years. And I haven't had time to delve into the details, my goal in producing this map was to try to get a sense of whether particularly large blocks of ag land had gotten subdivided over the last 15 years. And I just got the map itself. This is definitely one ag corridor, there's definitely some here, and there's definitely agricultural land up here, and so it's trying to get a sense of how we, how have we been, have we been, and how have we been losing agricultural property in Caroline? You know, obviously, the green areas are basically state land, so nothing has been happening here, because it's all Shenbaken Hollow, nothing was happening here, because it's Potato Hill, and nothing's been happening, you know, up here either, because all state land, a Hammond Hill. So outside of those protected areas, there has been a fair amount of activity in terms of dividing up parcels, larger parcels of land. I do need to get into the data and figure out how big some of these were, and that's exactly the analysis I have to do still. And the other thing to do still, because there, you know, Val brought the point of, of the rapid growth in population in Caroline, we're one of the more rapidly growing towns, and we saw that data last time, where from census data, you know, we're one of the top few the last two decades. A lot of that, I think, is related to the Boiseville development, but I don't, I haven't any chance to quantify. So that's also going to be part of the, the analysis, is to how many people does this really mean? And what fraction of the increased growth? I will tell you that all of this happened 2010 and after, so the growth from 2000, 2010, which was substantial, was definitely not driven by this particular development. Let's see what else I have in my notes here to say. I will briefly say, in terms of land use and land cover, one, what issue has to do with where the definitions used for things, so in 1995, 2007, and 2015, Tompkins County did a land use and land cover survey. But for the last one, they changed the definition of some of the categories slightly, so Osama Tassuna has gone back and used a consistent set of definitions for me to, to track through this. And there has been definitely a decline in what's called agricultural land, land in current ag productive use. From 1995, it was at just under 17%. It dropped to 14% in 2007, and then dropped just a little bit more to about 12.4% in 2015, so there has been a steady decline. What I haven't had a chance to track is really where that's showing up. Some of it is showing up in residential area, but that's not enough to count for everything, and so I haven't tracked down where it's going. But anyway, that, that's the sort of stuff that will be in here too, is perhaps some maps of where the ag land was and where the ag land is, so we get a sense of what's vanishing. All of that is in the section that, that we are calling the snapshot of growth, designed to sort of give everyone some sense of what's been changing, and that too, I think, will help motivate some of the, the language and discussion of what are, you know, proper land use controls and regulations or, or not for Caroline, so I guess that's the end of my info, if anybody else has something else to say. I'm gonna stop the screen share, but I can pop that on again if somebody wants to see a map again. Alright, I'm getting deafening silence. Val, you're muted if you're trying to say something. Alright. Alright, Val, I'm not fine, if you want to say something. Does anybody want to say something now? Raise your hand if you do. Okay. Alright. So it looks to me like where we're at is that Charles, myself, and Catherine are going to look at the particular sections we were working on with an eye towards the content we've talked about in terms of, of, you know, commercial development in Caroline. I'm gonna try to have a draft of this snapshot of growth section for the next meeting, I might miss, I won't definitely have final maps yet, because that could take, Sharon Heller was able to do about three weeks, three hours of work a week, and so she won't, it'll take a long time, because she's trying to service a lot of people, not just me. And what I suggested to the town board was that in about two more meetings, we should be able to process all of our texts, we need to look at the stuff Val has written about the procedures done by the, the previous the survey and all that data, and probably write a preface or an intro of some kind. And that we should be able to do that in about the next four to eight weeks. Do you guys feel comfortable with that timetable? Singing out for everybody, okay, so that will be our plan. And that means that we would be putting a rough draft out to the community roughly two months from now. And again, apologies everybody, we might miss a little bit, we're gonna do our best to do it in about two months. And the other open question is how then to receive comment on that? We obviously will very much appreciate written comments, but typically, there are information sessions where we can help, you know, educate the community about what's in there and why it's there, and then public hearings, where people can, you know, voice their opinion vocally. How soon we're able to have any in-person meetings is too soon to say just yet, and so we'll have to see where that goes. I know that on the moratorium, there will be an online public hearing. My drawther is that we have an in-person public hearing for the county plan, because of its importance, which might mean waiting until it is determined to be safe, but that question wants to be revisited this summertime.
Yeah, I mean, just to give a sense of how other places are planning things, you know, Cornell's canceled everything through mid-June, I think, at this point, in terms of gatherings. Maybe it's July, I can't remember, so I mean, like, I, yeah. This is probably gonna be the most likely thing would be, my guess, unless we want to put it off for a long time.
You know, my expectation is that it's possible in July or August, but if not, we'll have to go to an online forum, because, you know, it's, it's timely to get this done, but we'll have to sort of see.
We, many of us, I'm sure, will be attending the next meeting at seven. We might have more information on a timeline then, I mean, I don't know how strategic we want to be about aligning.
The current review has to proceed under the current laws and guidelines, and it's up to the town, and, and finally the town board to decide, no, we'd like to pause on that until we, the planning board, finish. So, you know, the point of a moratorium would be to give us time to finish, I think the six month timeframe is reasonable. Maybe a little ambitious, but not too unreasonable, if we have to get our work done, has to go up for public review, comment has to be received, document has to be revised, has to go to the, to the town board, who holds a public hearing and a vote. And so that timetable is, I think, you know, for all that to take place is probably about six months. But yes, good point Catherine, but again, we really can't tie ourselves to what the review board needs. They have to proceed with their business, and if the town board decides to, to hold a moratorium, then that gives everybody more breathing room.
I guess I would just urge us to be as quick as possible, assuming no moratorium.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, then I think the meeting is adjourned, unless there's anybody else has any other business they want to introduce? Okay, thank you all, thank you all, the public for attending, a lot have left recently, because they could hear you winding up, so sayonara, everybody, and I'm sure we'll be back.
People.